All right, next.
Next will be Mrs. Kristin Pfeiffer wishing to speak to the board on ongoing issues at O.L. Smith regarding her child and a teacher and bullying.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to start by saying that I'm not usually a very public person, so doing this for me is, you know, really kind of still, I'm still beside myself doing this. And I've tried to take action to do it another way, and unfortunately, it didn't work out that way, so this was my last choice. I do also want to say that I have two children, two other children besides the child that I'm going to talk about tonight, that are 25 and 21, both graduated from Etzel Ford and had a great education, and I didn't have any problems. I did have one problem with my oldest child being bullied when she was very young, but the teacher actually came to me and informed me about it, so I was very happy about that, and we were able to nip it in the bud, and she actually ended up becoming friends with her bully, so it was a really good, successful story. Unfortunately, I'm here today to address an issue that my son had with a teacher at O.L. Smith. He was in class with a gym teacher, and he had come home and told me that the gym teacher was saying inappropriate things to the children, to several children. One mocking a student with a disability, another to him himself, he had asked to use the bathroom, and I'm just going to quote what he told me. He told me that another gym teacher was present, and when he asked to use the bathroom, he was told no, and that the gym teacher looked at the other gym teacher and said, said my child's name, and then said, "He just wants to go to the bathroom to adjust his balls again." And when my son told me that, number one, it didn't sit well with me, because we're talking about a 13-year-old boy who is going through adolescence and is developing, and if he did want to do that, which that wasn't the case, he wanted to use the bathroom, then that shouldn't have been an issue either. Secondly, this is an adult, supposed to be a role model to my child and other children, and he said this in front of other children as well, and another teacher, who just kind of shrugged it off, but my son did say that the other teacher kind of looked down and knew that it wasn't right to be said. So I will say that for the other teacher that was present, but he didn't go about and correct it either, so. I had called the principal several times and left messages with the secretary Lori, and I didn't get responses.
Please don't mention names.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get responses, so I did call the administrative building and talked to the director of student services, and she had asked the principal to call me, and then the principal called me the next day at 2:50 p.m., when school was getting out, and asked if she could see my son. And I told her I would feel more comfortable being present, so we met the next morning at 8:00 a.m., where my son wrote a written statement and was told by the principal that if anything else happened, he could come to her. The next day, or, yeah, the next day, my son came home with some more things that the teacher had said to other students, inappropriate comments, and he had went back to the principal and told her, and her response was, "Do not go to gym class tomorrow." And she never called me to tell me that he was not supposed to go to gym class, she didn't tell him where to go, she just told him not to go to gym class. And my response to him was, "You have done nothing wrong, and I want you to go to gym class, and if anyone shouldn't be there, it should be the teacher until this is all over with, until they decide what they're going to do." So he went to gym class. Let me back up for a second. When he did talk to the principal, when I was present, she did tell us that she would not give the gym teacher my son's name, because school was still in session. This all happened the last week of school, the very last day of school, this was the next day following, was the last day of school. My son went to gym class, and he was cornered by the gym teacher and asked in front of several students why he told on him, word for word what he told, and pretty much bullied in a corner why he did that. And at that moment, my son looked up at him and said, "You did do those things," and walked away. I called H.R., I called the superintendent's office, I called the principal, I talked to the principal right after that happened, that same day, and she told me that she did not give the teacher my son's name in that conversation, but by the end of the conversation, she told me that she did give him my son's name as part of the investigation. I had tried to reach out to the board, I did actually reach out to the board by email, and I also reached out to the superintendent's office, because I wanted to know what had been done. He was back at school this year, my son was never, had an apology, I was never apologized to. I felt that it was mishandled not only by the teacher who it started with, but also the principal of the school, and that's why I asked for a meeting with the superintendent and the director of student services and H.R. When I asked for the meeting, I was granted the meeting, but I didn't see the teacher listed on the invitation list, so I asked why the teacher wasn't there, and I got a response from the principal stating that because he is not my son's teacher anymore, which he wasn't the day after the incident happened, because it was summer vacation, that he did not have to come to the meeting. And I reached out to the superintendent, oh, prior, let me back up, I did reach out to the superintendent in the beginning, the first week of school, and I was told that he was too busy, well, not too busy, he was very busy with attending 34 other schools before he could meet with me. Weeks went by, I called again to ask for another meeting, and I was told I would get a response soon. Another week went by, and I reached out to the board member, and the next day I got a call from the superintendent telling me that he would meet with me and that everyone would meet, but that's when the time when I got that list, the teacher wasn't on there, and I asked why he wasn't on there. Moving forward, another board member told me that it might be a good step to ask for a restorative meeting. Not really being too familiar with a restorative meeting, I still thought that all parties would be present, so I asked the principal to do the restorative meeting. Then I got an email from the superintendent and H.R. stating that they would not be coming to the restorative meeting, because they didn't feel that they needed to be there, and that the teacher, the principal said that the teacher didn't feel comfortable meeting with the whole group. My issue here today is accountability. The only thing I wanted from the beginning was a meeting with the teacher present. I would have been happy in the very beginning with a meeting with the teacher present, for him to look at my child and apologize and to admit what he did was wrong, and that he would not do it again, to my son or any other child. That never happened, that was never offered, that's why I'm here today telling my story. I still would like a meeting with that teacher present, I do have a meeting set up now on the 21st, but I'm, again, being told that the teacher will not be present, because he is not my student's teacher anymore, and because he doesn't feel comfortable being in a room with that many people. So I am asking for, on that meeting of the 21st, that the teacher be present. I was also asked if I would be bringing an attorney, which that was never my intentions either, I will not be bringing an attorney, I just want him to be accountable for his actions. I do believe that most of the teachers in the school are good teachers, and I'm not saying that he's a terrible teacher, I don't know why he did the things that he did, but I do think that if he's accountable, maybe he will, you know, remember that going forward. So that is the first thing I wanted to address. The second thing I wanted to address was the bullying issue at O.L. Smith. My son came home last weekend, did tell me that there was an incident between two children, he walked up on it, and it was a child with a disability that he actually mentored last year and kind of looked out for, because the child needs a little help. And when he walked up and saw that, he saw a female punching a male, and he came home and he said he was sick to his stomach, and he had a really hard time that night. And if you knew my son, he's such a good boy, but, and I'm really proud of him, because he looks out for other students, but I'm not going to get too emotional, but I did reach out to the principal, and the next day, a social worker called me and said that she had brought my son in, and I asked her why she even thought to bring my son in, and she said that the principal said that I wanted her to. I never asked for that, I'm not upset that it happened, but it's not just about my son seeing this, it's about all the other children seeing it as well. I need to know, we all need to know, or work harder as a community, for all the kids, not just the ones being bullied, the bullies themselves, because they weren't born to bully. And also, the children that are witnessing all of this, where do they go? What is their outlet? Anxiety, depression, suicides on all-time high. So what can we do as a whole about both incidents, I guess? Accountability, number one, for our students and for our teachers. And can the teacher be present on the 21st?
We're not going to answer that in a public meeting, that is not appropriate. We've all had the communication from you, and I hope that we can find a resolution that will satisfy you, but this is not the place, the medium to give you that answer at this point in time. So we'll have that conversation after the meeting, all right? And I appreciate your coming forward and sharing your stories. Thank you.
And addressing the other issue with the bullying in the schools, because my kids-
We don't normally comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I just wanted to make one other comment. I heard today that the principal, the woman with her, announced that October is National Bully Month. I asked several parents in the room today if they knew that, and they said no, and I had never heard of that myself, and I have two other children that graduated from the schools. It just seems like this is all coming to light now, because I've been emailing and kind of causing a stink, which is unfortunate, and it's also on social media, and other parents have come forward, which is also unfortunate, because a couple of parents had to leave, because due to time restraints, it ran a little farther than they expected, and I was the last one to speak today. So I'm just letting you know that many parents are unaware that October is National-
Okay, so it hasn't been advertised-
At all.
-where you would hear it. Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one other thing, advisory is 14 minutes long, I heard them also state that it's addressed in advisory, the bullying. I asked my son and several of his friends, and none of them had heard anything about bullying the whole year. They told me what was happening was that they were being talked about the vaping issue in the schools.
Thank you.
Next will be Mrs. Jane Maza wishing to speak to the board about policy 3131 for the DFT.
Hello, good evening again. I believe I sent a memo to everyone about policy 3131. I just wanted to put it on record that I'd like you to think about it and possibly keep the language, or I shouldn't say possibly, please keep the language as it is right now, because I think that that gives newer teachers and probationary teachers at least a fair start. And having them not being able to be recalled, we're losing quite a bit of money on their PD, because you are probationary for five years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Nope, I know.
Next is Mrs. Jane Maza, representing the DFT, about the American Education Magazine this month.
Yeah, this is very interesting, plus I have a little statement. I wasn't going to read it, but now, because of other comments, I'm going to read it this evening. Good evening, I'm speaking in support of the 1,300-plus teachers in DPS. These issues that have been discussed tonight are very upsetting, that everyone is so quick to judge someone. As teachers, we're expected to be many things, teachers, counselors, sounding board for our student and parents, yet we are human, and as the perfect human does not exist yet, we sometimes need to be helped to understand and think through our actions and speech. This month, the A.F.T. magazine, American Educator, devoted the whole month to the subject of confronting bias in schools. One article by H. Richard Milner, the fourth, suggests that teachers need to build their racial knowledge, which is knowledge about societal and educational experiences, realities that are shaped and influenced by race, racism, and racist acts. Building racial knowledge requires educators to more deeply understand aspects of themselves and others. This article goes on to suggest more open dialogues with community members, and professional development in these areas are needed. I think we need to show respect and tolerance for all, and to make assumptions without an honest dialogue is not productive for either students or staff. And in conclusion, we just really need to remember to be kind to each other, as a board member, Mosav, mentioned. And I think, just in the, today in society, we have lost kindness quite a bit, and I think on all sides, we need to remember that. And American Educator, I'll pass it on to you guys, it's the whole article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I extend you?
Yeah.
I put a motion on the table to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Second.
All right, we need a roll call vote, please.
Hussein Barry.
Yes.
Mary Lane.
Yes.
Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Michael Mead.
Yes.
Adam Mosav.
Yes.
James Thorpe.
Yes.
President Pat Lichkov. Yes. Next, please.
Special reports, M.A.S.B. Law Workshop Report, Dr. Malakow and Trustee Mosav.
All right, it's been a long meeting, so how long do you want this to be? It's a lot of slides.
You've got five minutes.
All right.
How about two? Give me a game.
Okay, well, I condensed their slides from 72 to 25, so hopefully we'll can get this in less than 10 minutes. So as most, as all of you know, that I have attended my first M.A.S.B. kind of workshop, and it was the Back to School Law Workshop, and it was in Lansing, so driving to Lansing wasn't bad, as I expected, because I've been there a few times with the Commission on Middle Eastern American Affairs. So most of that, that full-day workshop was on Title IX, and it was also on the negotiations with the superintendent, and something that I learned about the Evergreen Clause, which I'll discuss. And that they also talked about, I think this isn't, Joanne, this is an outdated presentation, I've made more modifications in two years, so. Can I, one second. So while I pulled the presentation, the whole day was a nice workshop, and actually, I was able to network with a few board members on the other side of the state, which I did encourage them, obviously, to lobby their own senator for funding for public education. So Dave, if I can get your help to get the-
I'm logged into this.
Oh, okay.
So if you want, you have to log in.
Hmm, it should be on the folder, and I think there were two presentations in there, so the folder for the, for this meeting, that Joanne shared with you, maybe?
All right. Yes, I didn't see anything in the folder.
Or we can, I can just sign in. All right, so I can improvise and, that's fine, I can get that other presentation, just bring it up, that's okay. Outdated, that's okay. Okay, so I'll present, no, no, that's okay.
It should be there.
Okay, so quickly, Title IX, for those who don't know, obviously, you're all seasoned and you already know it, but for the public to know, it's, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in the denied, the benefits of or subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving financial aid assistance." So obviously, the colored words here are the elements of a Title IX claim. So they have four different statutes that they're talking about. The first statute is the Educational Institutions, which is awesome, and then they're talking about the Employment, the Equal Protection Clause, and the Eliot Larson Civil Rights Act, which was passed by Congress. And then the enforcement of these laws, many different agencies that kind of enforce that Title IX. So the Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, the Michigan Civil Rights Commission, and obviously, the community also participates in that, and there are so many different litigations right now in the courts about Title IX violations. So the key terms here is obviously to distinguish the difference between the word sex and the word gender. So the classification of a person as a male or female based on their bodily characteristics, including the chromosomes, the hormones, or internal and external reproductive organs, and also other secondary sex characteristics. The difference in gender, it's the social or cultural expression of identity. And this is, as you recall, three years ago, when the Obama administration provided protection for the transgender students in public institutions, and mandated that public institutions must accommodate these transgender students in which area that they should go, for as far as the restroom, and our district actually has a history of providing that accommodation of unisex bathrooms that have, are in our schools. So now, here's a situation, which I'll explain a little bit, this has been rolled back by the Trump administration. So there has been some changes, and a lot of changes, in the past three years alone. They talked about also the disparate treatment in athletics, and this was very interesting for me to learn, that whether the selection of sports and levels of competition effectively accommodate the interests and abilities of members of both sexes. So if you would like to, for example, something that I'm very passionate about, and most of you know, is soccer, so we'd like to see it happening at the middle school level. Obviously, we have a lot of number of sports, but the boys and the girls must have teams. So in order to fund a program, we must have it for both genders. And then, there is the title focus about sex, and they talked about the disparate treatment that there's, they talked in detail about sexual harassment, quid pro quo and hostile environment, and again, the general disparate treatment is when someone is treated less favorably or being discriminated against because of their sex. Now, there's something interesting that I actually found in their presentation, when they were talking about booster clubs, and this might sound, people have good intentions, and they could come to the school district and say, for example, "I'll give you $50,000 to build a field for lacrosse, if you have a lacrosse," or "A field for soccer," right? But we have to be cognizant that this must be provided for all students, including female and male. We cannot just say, "Okay, let's do one for the males only or the females only." So this is very, very important. We could be in violation if we only provided it to unsex. Now, there are exceptions, obviously, like, for example, football, which are excluded in Title IX. So I have, okay. So what is hostile environment is unwelcome conduct of sexual nature, including sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, verbal, nonverbal, physical conduct or sexual nature. So it carries a wide spectrum of things that a student can do to another student, possibly, or employee to student, or student to employee. And then, they talked about, okay, how could you, as a district, prevent those measures? And I'm glad that our district has put a lot of things that they were recommending. So I won't touch a lot on them, but one of the major things is obviously a Title IX, yeah, Title IX Coordinator, which we do have there, but our district and all the districts are obligated by law to identify one by name, and that everybody needs to know, so that's being posted. They should be unconflicted, so somebody who is impartial, and they should have specified duties. There is a grievance procedure that every district needs to adopt and publish them online on their website or available for public to see. They must provide all of the equitable resolution, and that they, claimants need not to go through grievance procedures, and they need to know the basic elements before adoption. I've actually attached two handouts, which gives you that checklist that you need to have as a district, so it's in your pamphlet to see. Here's a nice stat, and they had a lot of slides of stats, but I just picked this one, that says 76% of the responders that were surveyed as far as a proactive culture to prevent sexual harassment, said they have never had a conversation with their parents about how to avoid sexually harassing others. And I call upon all of the parents to have this conversation with their kids, obviously, in school, and to always report of any harassment that they may have from anybody, whether it was a student, or a visitor, or a teacher. Hopefully, we can avoid these at all, and now we cannot say they will not happen, unfortunately, as President Pat Lichkov said, it's human nature. They may happen, and they could happen at any district, but the law must be followed, and the process must be followed, as far as to how to report and how to make sure that everybody is being given the due process, and that the, whatever the punishment or the consequences for these egregious acts are done or are given to that individual. Most had not had conversations about avoiding sexual harassment in school either, so that's kind of the norm everywhere, and we need to really raise that culture of, I always struggle with that, too, of how do I talk to my nine-year-old about sexuality? So we need to be, as parents and as educators, be very cognizant of that, and that the internet is, as a blessing and as a curse, and it has provided, at your fingertips, you can know anything right now. So the due process, they talked about it, too, OCR proposed, the Office of Civil Rights of guidance in court cases, show concern about ensuring the due process for allegations, and that's exactly what we witnessed today. So that we, opportunity to cross-examine parties, and that they need to be represented by counsel as well. Findings that investigations should lead to findings of facts and conclusions on each allegation of misconduct. Each party should have the same access to information, each party should have the same opportunity to respond, and each party should have the same procedures available. What are the outcomes after you do an investigation? Obviously, you do discipline, and you do discipline based on the process. It must be balancing, enforcing the code of conduct, so you go back to the code of conduct for the schools. With impact, a student is separated from education, and that's obviously the cases where you would have to do a separation if egregious acts are being done. Discipline must be proportionate to the violation, obviously, if the violation was an inappropriate comment that was a corny joke that was not landed well, adhering and a discipline, or something egregious like sexual harassment, or something very inappropriate to say. Notices that they should, both parties, so the aggressor and the victim, they should be noted in writing, and they should be told what the investigation has said, the individuals' remedies offered to reporting party. Again, a written notice to respondents should include the summary of findings, the sanctions, the appeals rights, and the retaliation prohibition, because there are many laws that prevent retaliation. I don't know how my doing on time, but-
I was going to say, we're going to have to-
You're waiting.
Is it almost there? Okay, we will have to extend?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Five more minutes.
So I'll just say about the corrective action, that it has to be reasonable, it has to be timely, it has to be age-appropriate, it has to be effective, and tailored to specific situation and context. And they provided a lot of examples, and here, how you intervene with a harasser, or what are the services and accommodations that you should do to the students who were being harassed, what are the training that you should provide to employees, as well as students and parents, and you reevaluate that process on an annual basis, so you make sure that you're hitting all of the points and you're not missing anything. Now, I want to, I wanted to go deep into the transgender students, but obviously, we don't have the time, but I want to make sure that this is, even with the rollback, and it's right here, yeah, even with the rollback of the Trump administration of protecting transgender students, there are so many different cases right now in courts that are obviously challenging his executive order, but there are also cases that are suing districts for not accommodating transgender students, and we have to be very careful, obviously. All schools must ensure that all students, including LGBT students, are able to learn and thrive in a safe environment. The Department of Education and Office of Civil Rights will continue its duty under the law to hear all claims of discrimination, and will explore every appropriate opportunity to protect all students and to encourage civility in our classrooms. The M.A.S.B., they showed a list of lawsuits in Michigan alone about transgender students, and they're funny. So there are checklists, which I provided to you in that paper, so the Title IX Coordinator, the policies and the practices, the remediation, the grievance procedure, the nondiscriminatory policy notification that we should have posted, and we have it everywhere, the non-Title IX discrimination, and also keeping such compliance reports as required, obviously, now by the law. And when applying for federal financial assistance to any program, we must be Title IX compliant. And then there were some also Title IX grievance procedures, that schools must adopt these grievance procedures that the claimants, they need not to follow the school grievance procedures before seeking other remedies, so like the Office of Civil Rights complaint or civil action, for instance.
Okay, I'm going to have to stop you so that we can extend the meeting.
Sure.
I offer motion to adj, I mean, to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Second.
So here is the last thing that I-
Well, wait, we got to do a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Hussein Barry.
Yes.
Mary Lane.
Yes.
Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Michael Mead.
Yes.
Yes.
Adam Moszak.
Yes.
James Thorpe.
Yes.
President Petlicov.
Yes. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Trustee? Um, we can revisit the rest of, if, if you think that you still have more you'd like to show.
I, I sent it to you in writing, but I'm covering just the main points, so, uh-
Yeah, yeah, so that, because we still gotta get through all of our other business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm almost here to the end, which talks about here, the summary of superintendent contracts. So they were talking about something called Evergreen Clause. And what it means is that you put this in, in writing, and I think we may have it, we have it with Dr. Milaiko, that if a superintendent is giving a, um, satisfactory or highly effective, effective or highly effective, that their contract is auto-renewed for a year.
It rolls out, yes.
Um, so some districts have been following it, and some have not. Um, but it's recommended by MASV because it gives the superintendent the closure and the feeling of being, having a job, but at the same time, that it gives them, if they would not erase that, uh, superintendent, that they can actually renegotiate the contract or negotiate separation. So, that was, um, the full day. I'm really looking forward for, uh, November, because I'll be in Lansing with, um, Trustee McDonald and Trustee Thorpe.
Traverse City.
Traverse City? What, what did I say?
The college is gonna be in Lansing that day.
Oh, Lansing, did I say Lansing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be in Traverse City.
You're going to Traverse.
So, um, November eighth, I think, and I, I, I will have to come back on Sunday night, so I will miss Monday, but I'm looking forward to also take the certification classes, because one of my goals is to be a certified school board member by the spring.
Right.
So, any questions?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna thank you and exit you.
Yeah, sure.
No offense.
No, no, not at all. I understand, it's been a long day for me and for all.
Everybody wants to go home. Okay. Next item, please.
Action item, special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent would wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude them from the motion below.
I actually have one, which I'd like to exclude and vote on separately.
And which one would that be?
Um, let me just, uh, pull up here. That is five. It's in, uh, for Zillow, or for Career Cruising contract.
Okay, the, the renewal of the-
Yes.
So you want, you don't have any questions?
I do have questions.
Oh, you do have questions?
And, um, I hope that, you know-
So you want it polled?
Yes, yes, please.
All right.
And I do have questions on five and twelve, they have-
And tw- you want twelve polled as well?
Well, those, I, I just have questions for Dr. Milaiko, if possible, so they're not, they're not gonna, I don't think they're gonna affect my vote, just for my own information.
Okay, so that one, you just have some, a question, but it won't affect your vote? So five, you want polled?
Madam President, we also have to poll twenty-five.
Yep, we just-
We have to poll twenty-
For a roll call vote.
Oh, that's a supplement, okay. Oh, for roll call, yes. Twenty-five needs a roll call. And, Trustee Thorpe?
I had a question on number twelve, but it's, doesn't need to be polled.
Okay, that, it, number twelve was the same as-
Yes.
Yes, okay, anybody else? Okay, can you make the motion, please?
Moved in action items numbered one through twenty-four, with the exception of five, be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in support now. Uh, let Trustee Moszak go first with his question on twelve?
Um, on twelve, okay.
He had just a question, but it was gonna-
Oh, so this one is a one, a one bidder, I believe, is that the one?
No.
No, security.
This is a security question?
Yeah.
Uh, one second.
Let me go ahead with my question, while you're looking that one up. Uh, this is worded that, um, let me find the actual wording. In, in general, it said, one of the companies was a clear favorite for the other ones. But when I look at the attachment, that Mr. Rango's-
Of the ranking?
Yeah, the ranking. It's not clear, in fact, it's another company that was the highest score, I believe, in, for both you and Mr. Misher, if a high score is best.
Well, they were, the scores were averaged to figure out who had the highest score between the vendors, and we actually brought in the top three vendors to be interviewed.
So what we're looking at was the preliminary. Board Report nineteen forty-three, it's a, a colored chart.
Right, that, that shows all of the vendors and their rankings. The bottom line should be the, the total ranking on an average.
When I look at it, the total ranking for Tenable was five points higher than Securitas. And you and Mr. Misher ranked Tenable higher than Mr. Rango's.
Right, so that, that may be true, but that's why we brought in the top three.
So was the interviews, the-
The, the deciding factor of which one we ranked from one, two, and three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I wasn't sure from this one, 'cause the, the clear winner in my eyes wasn't the one that's coming before us.
So that's how, that's how determined who we interviewed for the top three.
Okay.
But all three of us agreed of the candidate, that that was the top selection from all three of us.
Does that satisfy your question?
Well, I'm curious, in the preliminary, one was the highest for two of the three of you, but then in the final, what changed?
The interview. The clarification of the bid, 'cause each, each interview did their bids separately, outside of the price, we didn't even know what their prices were, when we interviewed each proposal that came in. So all three of us did it independently, and then the top three were selected to actually go through an interview process to find out who our top three were for the final three that were interviewed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah, same question on this one. Obviously, we're awarding this company six hundred fifty thousand. Now, and please, Dr. Milaiko, help me out here on kind of a legal question, maybe we may have to ask council. Can we make a stipulation for this company or this contractor to employ people from our community for security positions or have some kind of quota?
This company is actually located in Dearborn.
Right.
And so they have a strong belief, as part of the interview process, they like hiring local people for them.
Okay, but legally, we cannot put a quota on-
Right, we cannot dictate to them, 'cause it's a means and method, they're the one that better providing the service, so that's up to their provision.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be illegal.
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to, uh, vote? Oh, and we lost a vote. All right, um, yeah, are, are those, are those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, then, um, now we go back to five.
Yep, so five, um-
I'll read the motion first.
Oh, yeah, read, read, read the summary.
I'm getting there. At a board meeting in September, uh, on September eleventh, twenty seventeen, the board approved, based on mutual consent, to extend the licensing for one year, uh, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Career Cruising, now called Zello, is a self-exploration and planning program that helps people of all ages achieve their potential in school, career, and life. Counselors facilitate the learning. As part of the State of Michigan Education Development Plan require, uh, requirements, counselors must create an EDP with students in grade seven, and continue reviewing and updating until graduation. Career education is also required. Our counselors have utilized Career Cruising, now called Zello, for many years. This provides career information, a place to develop the EDP and transcript sharing. This is a renewal for grades seven through twelve. Funding will be from general funds, curriculum review, and building accounts. Recommended action is to recommend that an award be made to Zello, formerly known as Career Cruising, the sole source vendor, in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, for nine thousand seven hundred sixty-four user licenses in the calendar year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So moved.
I need a support.
I'll support.
All right, um-
So, uh, my first question is, uh, do we have usage data on Career Cruising? How many of our students are using it? And are they all being, taking this assessment that tells them where their careers are going?
Good question.
And I'll ask Ms. Alcaldrea to come up, too. I know Ms. Peterson had to tend to something with her mother this evening, so she would have been the one, the expert, but instead, so she talked to them and asked them to-
Sure, thank you.
So Career Cruising is used for all of our middle school students, to help them identify what their interests are, what, where they might be heading, um, and so it is used for all students beginning at the seventh grade level. We are looking at some other options as students get older, with the emphasis on college and career, but this is the, uh, Career Cruising, um, tool that we've used for a number of years.
So you're saying middle schoolers, but this renewal is for seventh to twelve, so this includes high school?
Well, yeah, it starts at the middle school level, though, and then students take the assessment, and then the data is used.
And they take it on a yearly basis?
I'm, I'm not sure about that.
They, they could, but there's a lot of career information in Career Cruising, so it-
So there's a lot of career information in Career Cruising. They can retake the, uh, the assessment, but it also has a lot of information if they're interested in a career, a college, anywhere in the country, i- it's got videos, uh, that they can hear about different occupations. It offers a lot of resources to students.
Okay, so you're saying it's highly used, so if we, were to take a survey of how many students are being, using it, what would you say the average, what's the percentage of the total number of students?
I wouldn't even, we'd have to look that up. There is a report that's available, and so we'd have to, to get back with you on that.
And I've heard, I spoke to, um, a counselor just, uh, on, we were talking about just careers, and they were talking about something called U-Scienc as an initiative? Can you, Ms. Alcaldrea, can you elaborate more on that?
Yeah, so U-Scienc is something I learned about when I went to Nashville, and I actually called the company, and the difference between U-Scienc and Career Cruising is, U-Scienc is test aptitude, students' aptitude for different occupations.
Right.
So it's a test where they take ten mind games, and, um, it gives us information on actually their number-one match in terms of aptitude and career, and we're actually using it at Fordson for career guidance in terms of our academy. Career Cruising does not look at aptitude, but it has a lot of good resources.
So if you were to compare both products, what would you say, and U-Scienc, is that a free program that we already bought?
Yeah, I was able to get it for free.
For free?
Mm-hmm.
Is that just for Fordson?
No, I, we were able to get it for all of our schools, yep.
And what, I'm sorry, what grade does it start at?
Um, it, actually, it's, um, ninth through twelfth. I, I provide it to my ninth graders, so I have some idea where, where their aptitude is.
All right, sorry to jump in.
Yeah. But Career Cruising does provide a, a lot of additional information, plus it's required by the state, and they take it in seventh grade, so there's a lot of usage in the middle school. And as far as in high school, it just depends on the student, you know, going in and following up on information in Career Cruising.
So, eh, just to emphasize or clarify again, I know the state has a requirement.
Right.
If some, if we weren't to go with this software program, what would be the alternative? Is there one?
There's, there's other programs, um, but I think, uh, of the ones that are available, I would say Career Cruising is the best one.
Is that why it was a sole source?
No, there's, there's some other ones available, but again, we've looked at them, um, and I can't remember the, the name of the other ones we looked at, but in the end, we decided that Career Cruising was the best one to start with.
So, to add to that question, if we would not approve this contract, then our students would not have Career Cruising this year?
Correct, and then-
Yeah, it's a license to-
So, and with, with the-
And they have to do something, yeah.
Yeah, with the MDE, then do they have a violation for us, that they would say the district is not?
I believe it's, I have to double-check, but I remember they implemented it several years ago, there was a state law that came up, this must be in compliance with this. And I know, because of Career Cruising, it went through all the counselors, and, you know, I wasn't directly involved, but I know it, I think we started it under, um, Brian Winston's administration, to be honest, so it's been with us for quite a while.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for this, this is great. I, I just, when, when speaking to middle schoolers and high schoolers, many of them are not taking this assessment. They may take it once, and that's it, so I don't know how many nine thousand user licenses, is that in, is that too much? I don't know. So, I have a lot of questions on this, and I hope that we can revisit this and even look at U-Scienc, because students enjoy it more, it's more interactive, and, um, they could even improve on their, to satisfy that requirement that we have from the state. We may get with the company, or you rebid this contract out, because I think, uh, for a simple test that tells the students where they at, we're not really s- We, we could do, we could rebid this contract out, that's, if we to rebid it out, how much time do we have?
Speaking of time.
I need to call, make extension of the meeting by fourteen minutes.
Support.
Roll.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Lane.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mead.
Yes.
Trustee Moszak.
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe, yes. Trustee Petlicov.
So-
Okay, do you want a roll call vote?
I, I'd like a roll call, and I'm, I, I hope that we could rebid this.
You mentioned another company.
U-Scienc, yeah, that our counselors are using, but apparently, they're using it for free, and I don't know how that possible.
But that's also high school, we're saying, though.
Yeah, I use it in the high school. They do have a middle school version, but you have to, you pay five hundred dollars for, for each middle school, but I, I don't think it necessarily will satisfy what the state requires. Uh, some states have gone to U-Scienc, but the state has to approve whatever it is that we're using.
Well, they're, they're not saying the vendor, they're just saying the software, right?
Well-
Or that, the things that, that this software must satisfy.
Yeah, right, exactly, and I, I don't think U-Scienc will fulfill all the requirements that, for the state of Michigan, that Career Cruising does.
So we know Career Cruising, Zello, covers it.
Yeah.
The state hasn't told us about any other vendors by chance? The state's probably not gonna screen anything out to make it easier.
Right. But we can follow up on it.
We can look into it.
We can look into it.
And revisit.
We can absolutely look into it.
So are they like the only vendors available for us to use?
That's what I was asking, no, they're-
Doesn't make sense.
I think it's Ambiance. Ambiance is another one, um, I, I don't remember the names.
So what I'm kinda hearing, why wasn't this bid it out? I guess that's another question for you.
This was something that the district looked at four years ago, and every year, the cost goes up by additional years' worth, that you actually pay a hundred percent of the grant, 'cause it starts off with the grant agency paying for part of it, and it kind of flips over to now we're paying for the full amount of it. So we've been in it for five years. Yeah, so that goes back to where, you know, prior to you and I starting at the district. And every year, the cost starts flipping more towards the district coverage than the other side, so it's been something we've been investing for a while.
Because it's a vendor.
And keep in mind that the kids have access to it throughout seventh through twelfth grade, so if you took it away, they would lose, you know, what they've already put in. So it's important that we try to maintain the same system.
So, and knowing that, why did we just approve a one-year contract back in twenty seventeen? From what I'm reading here.
I'm not as familiar with the contract.
On September eleventh, twenty seventeen, the board approved, based on mutual consent, to extend this licensing for one year term. So why are we doing this one year at a time, or?
Well, we are, because we are, we are looking into some of the things that you guys are bringing up. Is there another alternative? We have to get with the state, discuss it. We want to look into, uh, other possibilities, and we look at, we're looking at the cost, too.
From what I hear you say, is this program is collecting all this information, loan it's all-
Right. So we want to continue.
Yeah.
Well, we, we'd like to continue it, but we also wanna, you know, look at what's new, what, what else is going on. Now, they've made a lot of updates to Career Cru- Cruising, and some of them are very good. They provided us some information and training on it. Um, so it's always good to relook at everything that we're doing, and is, is there a better product? That, I mean, that's a continuous improvement that we try to do here.
When, when is this given to the students?
Seventh grade.
I, no, no.
What time is school year?
What time of the school year?
Um, I, I would say maybe in a month or two, fall.
So it's, it, it does have a time sensitivity to it. So it's, it does have a time sensitivity to it.
Yeah, yes, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
When does the current, does it say it in here? When does the current?
It's, the wording is misleading.
Very misleading.
Because it says for a one-year term, and then there's a space that's a little bit wider, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Why wouldn't that have been the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year?
Because we're, we're now in the twenty nineteen.
But, but why, why in a board meeting that we had in September of twenty seventeen were we approving something for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year?
That's what I'm saying, why are we doing this one-year, one-year time when, you know, our administrators are very happy with it and the collection of the information? When is this current contract extended?
Can I make an amendment to the motion? I, I think we can get another month until our next meeting. We get more usage data on Career Cruising, and we could see.
What I was trying to get at is when is this current, that's my question. When is this current, when it expire?
If, if we didn't approve it now, is it going to create a problem for us? Or, or can we?
I don't believe it's usable for this year. I think this is the license for this year.
That's my interpretation.
Now, would that delay students taking it? Yes. Could we last another month? We could.
Will we check in, or?
It looks like the two thousand seventeen is an error.
Just a typo.
Should have been two thousand eighteen.
It, it looks like the two thousand seventeen is an error, but I would have to check it. Like, we'd have to check on that before I could confirm. Because it really doesn't, the set, two thousand seventeen wouldn't make sense.
Because they've been one year renewals.
Right.
So it's an annual thing that has been coming every year?
Okay. So if it doesn't, if we don't renew it now, revisit it the next meeting, is that going to create a problem for you?
I think we could make that work. Yeah, I'm confident we could make that work. There's a window, there's a window when they, they do it, right? So we have some flexibility, and we can get that information.
And hopefully, you can get us usage data. I'd really be interested in how much, how many students are being used.
Reports on past usage, and we can provide that to you before the next meeting.
Is, is this possible? We're looking at the two thou, when the original approval of this was. And it says at the board meeting of November twenty sixteen, they awarded of this concurrent users license for Career Cruising. And then it, that jumps to the year twenty nineteen. Is it something that, because you're saying we had some kind of a grant kind of thing? Is that what, so this was the, and now we're, and now we're at the point from when we approved it in twenty seventeen to, that, that was all grant money, and now this is kicking in for this year that we're paying for it. That's why there's this twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen difference. Because that, that, when this was approved, it wasn't approved using general fund money. It was the grant, and it said it would then kick, and now it's kicking in.
How long was the grant for?
That was my question, how long is the grant for?
The more you use, the more you use it, the more you end up paying for it. Now, we're paying for a full amount this year.
But does, does the grant expire now, or are we obligated because we got grant money to continue for a certain amount of time?
The grant money's expired, our system will be wanting to.
Okay.
And we, and we are paying in full now, whereas we were subsidized in years past.
And the state sometimes does that with specific vendor where they get a matching.
It made sense to me after I looked at that, that it was, that's what it was.
The governor had vetoed a lot of those in this, this budget.
I would like to see it rebid.
Well, you know, we've got, we can either.
We can table it.
Vote it down, table it, what?
Yeah, but the maker of the motion has to withdraw the motion. We have a motion on the floor that was seconded, so we can't move on that. We have to move on that.
She's correct.
That first motion.
That would be Dr. Mead.
Yeah, that, well, that's why I said we either take a vote. Do we want to just do a roll call vote?
Unless Dr. Mead wants to withdraw the motion, that's up to him.
Well, whatever's easiest.
Yeah, whatever's easiest, I don't care.
We're, we're already past, you know.
I don't care.
Just, just, just take a vote. Do a roll call.
We do a roll call? Do you want me to reread?
No, no. It's, it's.
Not the whole thing, just the recommended, all right.
The motion that's, that we're voting on is that.
It's the, this motion.
Okay.
Do a roll call.
Hussein Barry.
No.
Mary Lane.
Yes.
Roxanne McDonald.
No.
Michael Mead.
Yes.
Adam Mosip.
No.
James Thorpe, no. Mary Petlicov.
I was actually on the fence on this one. Um, no. If we bring it back again, we'll bring it back again. Was, how many noes was that?
Five, two.
Okay. Okay. Motion doesn't pass. Okay, let's go to.
Number twenty-five. Approval of expulsion of Fortson High School student.
Just do the recommend, just read the recommended action.
Moved that the Dearborn Board of Education, having heard and considered the evidence in a case of a Fortson High School student, shall be permanently expelled from Fortson High School and the Dearborn Public Schools for one school year, one hundred eighty days.
So move.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Yes.
Mary Lane.
Yes.
Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Michael Mead.
Yes.
Adam Mosip.
Yes.
James Thorpe, yes. President Petlicov.
Yes. Motion passes. All right, can you do a quick summary?
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of a contract with Agenuity, Inc. Number three, approval of a contract to Playworks. Number four, approval of a contract to Advance Ad. Number six through nine, approval of change orders. Number ten, approval of a contract to Water Management Specialists, Inc. Number eleven, approval of a contract to Wayne Metro Metropolitan Action Agency. Number twelve, approval of contract to Securitas Security Services USA. Number thirteen, approval of contract to Spalding to Decker Associates. Number fourteen, approval of contract to Tremco, Inc. Numbers fifteen through eighteen, approval of non-instructional instructional personnel items for P-12. Number nineteen, approval of financial statements.